I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
We're all here. Moving into public participation, the first item is public comment. Any member of the public that's here tonight that wishes to address the board on any topic may do so at this time. If you're on the agenda elsewhere, you don't have to. But if you're not and you wish to address the board, come on up. All right. We did receive one email comment today that I keep misplacing from a citizen. I'd say resident, but I'm not exactly sure where the resident lives. There we go, an Aurora resident. Was this by chance read into the record at the Plan Commission Public Hearing?
No, that was received today.
So the answer is no, and I have to read it? Okay. All right. This is from Teresa Rodolphy. Unfortunately, this has been brought up before, but the residents of subdivision across the proposed development are mostly not in favor of this citing concerns listed below. Benzene and other compounds released to the atmosphere from underground gasoline storage tank vents, and while gas is being dispensed at the pump, which can cause nausea, cancer, and low birth weight. Area residents could also, could have also been at risk of well contamination, do not so much to leaking underground storage tanks but from gas spilled at the pump. This would affect the area considering it is right next to the houses and park district property and home to many wildlife. Impose a tremendous increase in traffic on neighborhood streets by having neighborhood be used as a cut through to avoid light and get into the area. This is probably the reason it was voted down in Montgomery adjacent to Montgomery residents' neighborhoods. Increased alcohol unit sales are associated with increased crime in the area, losing more land in the area. How much free open land does Montgomery have, and does that meet the requirements? Why the need for new gas station where there are six gas stations within three miles and five car washes? Why the need for another gas station with the increased, due to use of electric vehicles and working remotely at home? Is this far enough away from the park and church for Illinois liquor laws, and why not make it closer to roads towards 30 where there's increased traffic? Have you any consideration of the increased traffic this will cause on that route and for residents in the subdivision across the street? I'm sure you're relaying on Aurora residents to frequent this establishment, relying. What about during sports seasons where there are baseball and soccer tournaments? How residents exit the subdivision if it's backed up for the proper traffic evaluation? What about putting other convenience stores out of business or taking away from mom and pop shops down the road? And this is from Teresa Rodolphy. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes.
Everybody points at the same time. If you could come to the microphone and just state your name and address, and we'd love to hear you. Yeah, over there.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name's Diane G. Marino, and I also am a resident of the Lindens. And I don't want to see a gas station on that corner at all, but what I wanted to ask you now, with the email, does anyone have any response to what was said in the email?
So we will talk about this when it's on the agenda later in the meeting. The board will discuss, but it's not really a question and answer. So if you do have a public comment, we'd love to hear it, and it's a two-minute opportunity.
Okay, so I get two minutes to stand up here. All right.
Minute and a half, actually.
Okay. Just a question. With your comprehensive plans that have been put out over the years and with your traffic plans, I believe like shopping centers, restaurants were in there. A gas station was never on that list as far as what I can see. And the owner of this owns other gas stations in the area that also has leaking tank, and I would think that would be a concern of yours with the water that is so close to it. When I was here before, you told me a hotel was not going to be built where it is on the plans to be built. So if you can clarify that at some time. With the new plans, the parking is considerably less. Is there still going to be room for the trucks to park, and if so, where? As far as the six liquor licenses that will be requested from the developer, are they going to get all of those? Because I know you've turned other people down for the same, you know, that also want the liquor license so they could have gaming. You know, your 2004, and I know we're going back ways, but your 2004 traffic study didn't even show us on the map, which we are right across the street. It shows other houses on the east side of Orchard, but not ours. And for you to put a gas station kitty corner across from the neighborhood there, I just don't think it's right at all. So really, like I said, I wasn't even going to get up and talk at all because I think everybody knows how I feel about that. I'll just finish writing this, and then I'll sit down. Regardless, I know it's going to be built. Their pockets are as deep as they can get. So they can do whatever they want. That's it. You probably didn't get much out of what I had to say.
Thank you. And I do appreciate you making your public comment tonight. I sincerely do. Just a point of-
I want to say, do I have 10 seconds left?
Negative, but thank you. The one thing I did want to say, though, is the special use for a gas station has already been approved. What's before us tonight is an amendment to the PUD or special use because of the site plan change. Correct, Sonia? All right. And then the one other thing I wanted to add or ask about was in regards to liquor licenses. Have any liquor license applications been made for the site yet?
They have not made any application at this time.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. If there's no other public comments, we'll move into the second item, which is the swearing in of Officer Bradley Chersoudas. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. A new era for Montgomery. If you guys remember early spring, you enacted an ordinance about lateral transfers. Well, tonight, I'm happy to say this is the village's first lateral transfer police officer. I'd like to introduce to you Officer Bradley Chersoudas. Come on down, Brad. Brad comes to us with about three zeros, almost three years' experience from Westburn Springs Police Department. Grew up in Yorkville, graduated from Yorkville High School, then went on and graduated with a bachelor's in business administration from Aurora University. Go Spartans. Where he's halfway through his master's for the same thing there. When he's not enjoying being a police officer, he's either hiking or fishing. He is joined tonight by his mom Denise and dad Paul, his sister Emma, and his girlfriend Ashley. So without further ado.
All right, welcome.
Of course you can. I think it's yours anyway.
All right. Want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Bradley Chersoudas.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge-
No, faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer-
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
I mean, his mom is actually, his mom or his girlfriend, one of the two is going to come down and pin the badge on. I think both of them.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
He looks a little nervous, chief.
I think Denise looks more nervous than he is.
Let's take a picture.
Oh, yeah. Get a picture. Come here.
Dad, we can have someone else take a picture.
The fact that Christina's holding the camera over her head to take his picture because he's so tall. I wasn't kidding. All right. Moving back into public participation, the last item is the MEDC update. Char? Would you update us on your security settings?
Choose the other one. Just your bank PIN number will be all we need.
You've been doing fraud.
The last four of your social security.
If it helps, I can see it on my, on the Zoom.
Hold on. I don't know why it always thinks there's more than one screen.
Because there is two. That one.
Chief, while we're waiting, I wanted to say well done on the presentation and remembering everybody's names.
It was nice.
Check his palm. I talked to a sixth grade math teacher. Check his palm.
All right, PowerPoint. You're starting to make me a little upset.
We're just trying to click the other one, right?
Try this one.
Enable.
It's not even letting you like select it, no. All right, hold on here.
Ta-da. Look at that.
All right. So, hold on. I need Zoom to, people on Zoom to be able to see this as well. Scroll over. We're going to share screen. This is a mean spirited show here. All right. Really? It's okay. You say it's okay. I say this is unacceptable. All right, let's see. Can we tap through? There we go. Enjoy, ma'am.
Except for the Zoom. You want me to help?
Not showing on Zoom now.
Well, it is, but you got to go into, so you shared the screen, but share the presentation.
I did. Yeah. Oh, resume share. Hold on. Things got paused.
Not better. At least on my screen. How come you?
No, all I have is just a small corner of the presentation.
Maybe. So, and is that? Oh, so you only have one screen now? Sweet. So let's stop share. No, it looks like it. One second. You can share. Only host. That's a good one. This one? PowerPoint side show? Why is it doing that?
That looks good.
On your Zoom screen now?
That looks good.
Okay. You would think. Except for that big box in the middle.
John Etheridge raised his hand. He may know something that other people don't. I hear you, John.
Are we good? Did you want me to wait for John, Steve? Did you say he was raising his hand?
No, I think he was trying to solve the problem.
Oh. Okay. So you all ready? Okay, so I think I timed this, and I'm about 10 or 15 minutes. So first, I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here and presenting to you the MEDC and the updates. Normally, I do this twice a year, January and June, so we're close to being on schedule here. Ah, now it's not moving. There we go. So I'm going to talk about a recap of the last six months, in addition to some changes, some new opportunities, as well as ways that we could help our business community, as well as talking about flexibility and compromise. So obviously, January, February, March, we were pretty knee-deep in snow, virtual learning, COVID still, and many of us were also knee-deep in the Lion Electric Project, eight months, to be exact. We worked on that project. There was a ton of people who assisted us from the state to the county, to each and every one of you, helping, trying to get that deal come to fruition in Montgomery. It was a $70 million deal, and the exciting thing is although we did a lot of the heavy lifting, it's not really a complete loss. We were the ones who actually brought this deal to Illinois. There was not one other Illinois site that they were looking at. So what does that tell you? That tells you that Montgomery impressed a whole lot of people. And that being said, we also gained the respect from Intersect Illinois, the state of Illinois, the client, and about eight different consultants. We set up meetings, tours. Almost everybody in this room was pretty much involved. There are new deals that have come to fruition because of this project, and I also believe that the jobs that will be created can also be had by our residents and local surrounding areas, as well as in reverse. There will be people who might work at that facility and want to come home to Montgomery. It's less than a 35-minute commute depending on the route that you take and how fast you go and who's on the radar. So what does that say for us today? We're still going to continue and focus on Caterpillar. We still have quite a lot of land left. In addition, we have adjacent property as well. We continue to add data and property and land to the database for Intersect Illinois, and also we've been answering numerous RFPs over the last three months. We've also started adding assistance and creating help to all the companies looking to recruit people for jobs. This is huge. This is something that is not just a Montgomery issue. It is going to be a national issue. As all the baby boomers start retiring, we really need to help our community and we need to help all the businesses find people that are good and find people that want to work. And it might not sound like a lot, but you can talk to a neighbor, you can see a good person at a store or somebody that waits on you, and you hand them your card and you say, you should come to Montgomery. We know a lot of people who'd like to hire you. I started doing that, and it works. We have to recruit people to come to this region, and that's what the good employers are doing. So I just thought that that was something that all of us could help and participate. The other thing that's been a nice change, in my opinion, is finding the best buyer and developer to fill the vacancies and the land options. Some of that was started a while back. Some of that was created through the uniform, new, I don't know all the acronyms on that. Maybe Sonia can help me. The Unicode or, I'm not quite sure what that plan is.
UDO.
UDO?
UDO.
UDO. And also, the other thing that I wanted to talk about that was very positive for the MEDC was it was around January or February, we received notification that our PPP loan was approved. So that's $19,000 that was added to our revenue. In addition to that, we've added two executive partners, so we have some funds available, and then we can look at other ways to create either additional programs, additional marketing, something to add to what our efforts might be. We've had some changes within the organization. Obviously, we had a few people retire. Scott Vickers was replaced by Will Garsha, and Denny Lee was replaced by Steve Youngerman. In addition to that, we added Kim from Carl Buttig and also Joel Pyle from the Unified Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. He's also looking to help teach students and individuals who might need to get into the trades, all the different programs that are available, and that's still a very good living. So I thought that was a nice addition to our board. Now, here are some nice highlights just from this year. How did that, something happen with that photo? That's weird. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. The first one is Danny Boys. As you know, this weekend, there was a grand opening sneak peek. Most of you were there. The event actually went Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It was a very nice event. We had the best weather on Friday. Saturday and Sunday, I think, was a little rainy, but they were still pretty crowded. As I spoke to Phil Cullen, he talked about how many people you need to serve and how difficult it is to get enough staff. So that being said, when they're open, we will not know yet until he's fully staffed. Most restaurants and most businesses, for that matter, want a certain amount of people, you know, to serve so many people so they're, you know, being waited on, you know, effectively. So that being said, if he doesn't have the 12 bodies that he needs, he can't open. So again, at that event, you know, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell your kids, you know, we need people to come out and work and help our businesses succeed because there are places in other states that are literally closing their doors because they can't support either the staff or the labor. And I know it's happening a lot in Florida, and Phil said that one of his neighbors, actually his supplier for bakery, is now closing because she just can't keep enough of her staff. Now, the second picture is the La Chiquita Building, which again is a goal and has been since I started addressing Montgomery Road. This adds brand-new retail. I believe there are two of the spots filled, but there are still several spaces that are available. They have not divided them or did have done the build-out yet, but we are working on, with the developer, on addressing the marketing materials and getting that data out there. The next picture was actually CenterPoint's property, and there was a plot of survey and a copy of the lease, which I don't know how that could have happened, but somehow that picture was duplicated. And, but the point on that particular property was that's where Suncast was. Suncast vacated. They took about 18 months to actually vacate, and that was almost a million square feet that was empty. And that being said, one of our success stories for Montgomery that I'm proud to repeat is that 231, 742 square feet that are leased is leased to a company that is called, let's see, BuyMyBooksBack.com or SellYourBooks.com. He actually has several different businesses, and he started out as a freshman, grew up in Montgomery, and the business has been open for 13 years. He started on railroad and is now looking for approximately 50 to 100 new employees. He has about 110 in the CenterPoint building, and again, he built out some really nice offices. He's got color-coded shelves. It's amazing. You should go visit it. It's, he did a really, really nice job, and you can't say enough to him about Montgomery. He just loves Montgomery. And when you hear those stories, you just, your heart just pounds, you know, and, and he's a great guy who can give us a great testimony, I think. I believe probably in your actual handout, you'll have the correct photo of that lease. In addition to that, you'll see that there are three other leases that have been signed, and they are at, you know, different times. So again, the building's not completely filled, but there are still three additional leases So again, the building's not completely filled, but there are still three additional leases that have been signed. In addition to that, now, the next photo, which currently on the screen is being hidden by the, by this little zoom thing here, is, I believe, can I make that go away or no? Probably not, huh?
You can move it.
So behind that, or on your slide, is the 204 acres that many people know.
Well, everybody else can see that just fine.
There you go. That 204 acres has actually been gaining some ground. We've been getting a lot of calls, both Sonia and I. Often, people refer to that as the sharing property. We do need to work on getting some funding for bringing water and sewer there. But again, we've had three or four different prospects looking at that site because Caterpillar will not let go of any land so far. I'm not sure that they will. And in the past, they also had an option on that land, or at least land that was nearby. So I'm not quite sure where we stand with that. But again, we're very fortunate to have available land to be developed. Here is just a few of the new types of advertising that I've been looking at. When I did a speaking engagement at an industrial forum, I had the luxury of introducing Romeo Ville's mayor, Brian Gay from Aurora, Choose Do Page, and a broker or two from Cushman and Wakefield. And all of them had some great stories, but they all had to say that they were struggling with finding land. So luckily, I was in charge of the microphone and I was able to tell 200 industrial brokers, "Guess who's got a lot of land?" So that was really fun. I'm going to do that every year. So again, good things happen to those who wait. Again, behind, I don't know what happened with this, but behind that one photo is Buttig, who's looking for at least 200 employees. And also, Performance is constantly hiring. We've started posting jobs available, different events that are occurring. I even started posting videos of why you want to work with particular companies. You know, competing for labor is a difficult thing. So we have to sell the community and the company that they're working for. Everybody is raising their rates as far as pay scale. But in addition to that, they need to like where they're working. And I think that all of us need to also help them be appreciated. So if you're at a restaurant, you know, say thank you to the waitress. "Today I got a Jimmy John's." And I said, "Thanks for working." And he was like flabbergasted. It was like, we need to thank people for coming to work and working. So it's just a big deal and it's part of what I do is addressing what our businesses need. And again, it's a big issue. Here I continue with just some added effort. I continue to send monthly updates to the Village Board. You should all be getting them. After my MEDC meeting, I will send you the Director's Report and the additions. You're welcome to ask any questions, obviously. And some of them might have, you know, code names like, you know, the original name, I believe, for the Lion property was Walnut. I have no idea why, but that was the code name. So as you look back in your records, you've known about the project for quite some time. You just might not have known the exact name of the project. Again, increased communication with the board. Both Steve and Doug make sure that the MEDC Board knows what's going on. He gives everybody an opportunity to talk about what's going on in their business. I have continued my meetings with Jeff on a monthly basis. Community development, Sonia's been wonderful. And I started with the Communications Director, and I kind of love her too, even if she's not here. It's okay. So that's exciting for me. It's like adding additional arms to what I do. Also, I'm excited that all of these individuals also help work with the business community. I think I need some water. Okay. So we talked about job resources. We talked about marketing. Also, I want to talk about a regional approach, which is something that we've done with Montgomery to go. I have a private group and a public group. You can post stuff about your business. You can post about jobs. And what's interesting is you can also post about businesses and then those businesses can also post about you. So just in the last 48 hours, as we all started posting about Danny's and Gray's Mill, I think we hit over 1,000 with four different venues. People sharing those photos and on Facebook. Again, even individuals from Aurora and other communities talked about how excited they are to come to Montgomery. So again, sharing our resources and helping each other is huge. The other thing that continues in Montgomery and gets stronger, I think, every year is the we care attitude and environment. And I know, I'm not even sure if I can even talk about some of these things, but what I can tell you is there's a lot of positive things that I hear and it just keeps getting better. And I want to give you a few examples because I'm not just saying this. So one example, and I'm not even sure if it originated from the Community Development Department or Public Works, but I had a business owner who, as the streets were being torn up, had an issue with a parcel of property that was kind of all rocks and weeds and garbage. And within a short period of time, he called me and said, "Thank you so much. The village was so awesome." So combined with Community Development and Public Works, they found a solution to fill these holes with something that, again, it's not brand-new concrete, but it is something that eventually will be a solution and a win-win for both the village and this particular business who's actually been in Montgomery over 30 years. So those are the stories that you want to hear. And those are the stories that keep growing. And I know a lot of you say, "Sharr, how do you get all these calls? You know, there are wolves and there are rabbits and there's beavers." But when you start getting calls about how great the village is, those are things we want to share and we want to let everybody know. So again, thank you very much. That helps me do my job. And I'd rather hear good news than bad news. So thank you very much, Mark and Sonia. So I hope I don't get in trouble. Okay. The other thing is, again, increased land opportunities, shared resources, working together. I'm looking to create additional marketing opportunities. We're going to talk about ways to repurpose properties. I know that that's occurred with the Gray's Mill. We're looking at the other corner as well. Helping businesses get rejuvenated and also creating networking opportunities, as I mentioned, with the Industrial Forum. I just highlighted, this thing's got like, I have no idea. So now we've got two domes there. They're actually both up. I don't know if everybody's seen that, but they almost look identical, but I have no idea what happened with this. Probably was a transfer in the PowerPoint on the slideshow, I'm not sure. And then Reich Brothers. And then the ad that is kind of squeezed in here actually went in the Business Ledger. And on one side, we talked about the industrial growth and opportunities in Montgomery. And then on the other side was a profile identifying the key players in Montgomery, including the mayor and community development. So that, I thought, was important this time because it was a local paper and most businesses will relocate within 30 to 45 miles. So I thought it was a good way to spend some money. And again, just another marketing opportunity. I'm sorry, these photos actually, I don't know what happened on the slideshow. They're good on your paper handout. Sometimes when you're working with older versions, I probably have old software. So I'll have to work on that. And I am happy to answer any questions or comments or whatever you'd like.
Thank you, Sharr.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
I have one. Two, actually. The Business Ledger that you referred to, the ads going in, could you detail that a little bit more?
Sure.
Who receives it? What is it? What's their...
So I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but it was a full-page ad and it was focused on relocating businesses. And it was done through the Business Ledger, which the circulation goes from Will County. I'd have to look all that up, to be honest.
More original?
Very regional, yes. We are often in directories that include site selection and real estate. We started slowing down a little bit when our funds, we didn't have a lot of money to do that. Originally, we did a lot of national advertising to introduce Montgomery to the real estate world. Now we're pretty popular and well-known, but we still want to keep our name and our logo and our face out there. So we continue to do that. But I'm drawing in the circle because local companies will stay within a certain mile radius to keep their labor. And so we want to make sure that they know Montgomery's here, we have buildings and we have land. But I'd be happy to send that paperwork to you.
I was just curious if it was a regional distribution, a national, a state?
Yeah, it's regional. All regional.
How broad that reaches and something like that.
That particular one, yes.
And then your member who's in the Electrical Union, working with the trades and students, if they know or that they are or not in talks with our districts about those programs and working with those kids, would just make sure that he knows that we'll get him in touch with the right people to definitely keep those conversations happening because I know the district really wants to focus on some of the trades as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. Anything else? Doug, did you have something?
No, I just, thank you, Sharr, for, I mean, she has done a fantastic job with membership and recruiting. And again, last year, we had a fantastic golf outing, which is coming up again here in September.
September 9th.
September. I didn't have the date, but September. And again, she does a great job of marketing the village. I have a friend who does some business with Sharr outside of the village. And his one comment to me is that she loves the village of Montgomery. She absolutely engages in every aspect of Montgomery. If I mention that I eat somewhere else, she says, "Why? Was River View closed?" So she is definitely a champion for the village and for our community. So thank you, Sharr, for all of the extra effort on that. And again, your networking is fantastic with everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sharr. All right. Moving on, we have the consent items. I'll read them and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the Village Board meeting of June 28th, the building report for June of 2021, accounts receivable for June of '21, water production report for June of '21, the refuse report for May, accounts payable through July 8th, and the request for a waiver fee for temporary liquor license for the Dixon-Murst farm.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
I carry 6-0. Thank you. All right. Items for separate action. The first two this evening, we'll discuss together and then take action as needed. We have the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission 2021-008, amendment to a special use for a planned unit development for Jericho Orchard Planned Unit Development Gas and Wash. And then the first reading of the Enacting Ordinance 1921.
Thank you. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, you approved a planned unit development that included Ricky Rockets over there at Jericho and Orchard. That PUD approved a special use for a gas station and car wash use kind of directly there at the corner and had approvals for some other uses on the property as it's bigger than just that one site. The Ricky Rockets did not go through, so they now have Gas and Wash as their user for that particular lot. And so they've come in for a PUD amendment because their plans are slightly different than Ricky Rockets was. Generally, the access points stay the same. So your major access coming off of Jericho and Orchard is in the same location as previously approved. But overall, there are some changes that do require an amendment to the PUD. So what you have before you is a gas station and car wash. That also includes a drive-through for Dunkin' Donuts as part of the convenience store building. There's new signage. The elevations are a little bit different. So some of the deviations that are required are a bit different than previously approved. So for this particular use, we've got the following deviations for this site. We've got reduced parking lot island area, some reduced foundation landscaping area in front of the building, reduced tree canopy coverage, which is a newer requirement with the UDO having the tree canopy coverage around other parking lot areas, reduced buffer yard landscaping, reduced front sidewalk width, facade transparency less than the required 60% for the car wash building. In that particular instance, you have the car wash facing towards Jericho. They do have the equipment on that north side of the building, so they don't have any windows on that side for the most part. So we're keeping visually it a little nicer along Jericho than having windows that would show you all the fun equipment they have inside the building. And that also allows for the vacuums to be on the south side of the building so they're accessed internally and not facing out towards the street. Also, we've got some additional illumination levels at the access points and the right-of-way points, so it allows for better visibility, but it does exceed our maximum of one foot candle at those locations. And then we've also got some deviations for signage that are a little bit different than they were for Ricky Rockets. So some additional wall signage on the east and south elevations. This includes the additional Dunkin' Dinos, Dunkin' Donuts signage for that user. We've got a manual changeable copy signage on the east elevation that exceeds 30% of the total area of that wall sign. Canopy signage that's a little bit larger than 40 square feet, which is the maximum allowed by our code, and additional canopy signage for the vacuum canopy that's there on the south side of the car wash building. The Plan and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on July 1st and recommended approval of the amendment to the special use for this development with conditions. These included Village Board approval and recording of a final plot of subdivision for this planned unit development, and that'll make the creation of this lot for the Gas and Wash to go on. We need engineering plan approval, Kane County Department of Transportation approval for the access points and the Parkway Trees locations. We also recommended that six ornamental trees that are located in the buffer yard on the west side of the property be replaced with evergreen trees to provide additional screening on the west side and help meet the intent of the ordinance. And that also, the Public Infrastructure and Development Agreement provisions that were recorded back in 2019 must be followed. The motion passed 7 to 0. There were a few residents from the subdivision on the north side of Jericho that spoke against the proposed project citing concerns about traffic noise and questioning the need or demand for another gas station and car wash in this area. We do have the architect here that can answer any questions that you have specific to this particular site plan and the elevations, if you have any. And I'm also here to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Sonia.
I have a question, please. I think in our original PUD with Ricky Rockets, there was a Montgomery Monument sign that was, is that, am I missing that?
I was just thinking that, too.
Yes, they are reserving a sign easement area for Gateway Sign for us to be able to put up there at some point.
Which eventually, that, the new sign that was put up, the flat sign that was put up. Ma'am? Ma'am? I've been a trustee for nine years, and this has happened once before, where Habitat for Humanity came up here... for Humanity came up here, and the people that were against the Habitat House spoke the whole time while he was up here. You were going to show this gentleman and this board the same respect that they deserve? Otherwise, you're going to leave. The choice is up to you.
All right, Steve.
Respect, that's what we were asking.
Chief? No, hey, Steve. Teresa, did you have a question?
I did.
I'm not finished.
Well, hold on a second, Steve. Do you have questions of our staff, professional staff that are here this evening?
No, this, yeah.
All right, perfect, rock and roll.
So that flat sign's going to be taken down, and then the other sign, which is, I think, a stone monument sign, is going to be put up at some point. Okay, that was my question.
I think with our money, right? At some point in the future.
Yes, at some point, yes.
We're just reserving the space.
They're reserving an easement for us to be able to install one, yes.
Got it.
Okay.
Anything else, Steve?
That was it.
Teresa.
Sonya, regarding the, there's a couple items here regarding the reduction of landscaping areas, the yard landscaping, and the tree canopy coverage. I know in other cases, when we've had a reduction like that, we have then had the, the petitioner put additional landscaping somewhere else on the property. Is there room on the property to do that, number one? And my other question related to that has to do with the, the additional illumination in terms of screening that from those homes that are across the street from it. Is there a way to make sure that is screened as much as possible so that the, there isn't any light pollution? You know, trying to keep it, trying to keep from having a lot of light going over to the homes is where I'm going with that.
Right, so with the landscaping, there is additional landscaping on the property. They're not doing the bare minimum that is required by the code, so we do have some additional landscaping that is along Jericho and along Orchard to provide that additional landscaping. And then again, you know, trying to get as much evergreen landscaping as we can along Jericho and along the western property line to help with the screening and kind of softening of, of this use from the adjacent residential. As far as the lighting goes, again, these are, you know, your kind of overhead parking lot lights that are going to be illuminating those curb cuts. I don't really know that you can screen them too much. Certainly shielding can be put on there, but the light levels were not excessive. You're looking at maybe five to six foot candles at those curb cuts, which is really, you know, again, is, I'm going to be on the south side of the road and it's not directed, direct, you know, it's not pointing out towards those houses. It is pointing straight down.
Directed down. I'm just, I guess that's my concern, is I just want to make sure that it's really focused and directed toward these places where we're turning in, turning out, and that it's not necessarily excessive in lighting up, you know, the whole side of the road.
Right, the lights aren't going over the road, they are kind of over those, those access points. So trying to minimize, again, that spill over as much as possible.
I, I think as you head down, as you head west on Jericho Road, it's very difficult to see the homes on the right anyway.
Because they're fully screened.
They have, they have the full screening along that road.
To be honest, I haven't, I haven't gone down Jericho in quite some time.
I remember that, looked at it a few years ago, and it was like, pretty dense.
Yeah.
Evergreens. And again, I think the evergreens are the, exactly for that reason, help with sound and shielding.
Because this was always designated as a commercial corner, right?
Yes, it was. So on the side of the road where the homes are, they have some pretty substantial screening. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, sorry, I just had one or two questions for, for staff real quick, and then I'll introduce, and I hear your comments. The, we are not, is there going to be an inter, a signal at this intersection with the subdivision?
Not at this time.
It's unsignaled?
Correct.
And, but they are installing a crosswalk across? That's what's drawn here.
Yeah, so could you clarify on that, that access egress on Jericho, is that directly adjacent to Summer Hill, the street that comes out of the subdivision?
The full access point is directly adjacent from that. A crosswalk will be something that has to be approved by Kane County, if that is.
Because Jericho's a KDOT?
Yes.
Okay. And then, kind of related to that, too, I can see that they're proposing sidewalk, I assume from that crossing, partially, partially through their site, and then it kind of dies at the property line. And then I suppose people just walk on the pavement to get to the building from there, but then the sidewalk does not continue down Jericho to the intersection?
Right, they're not proposing any sidewalk along the south side of Jericho, since there is existing sidewalk on the north side. So they are having the sidewalk continue along, or there is the sidewalk along Orchard, and then they will have the connection at that southern access point coming in and then going up to the convenience store along that right-in, right-out access road.
Kane County seems willing to allow the right-in, right-out. Have, has, has this been checked or at least vetted with them?
Actually, yeah, these are the exact same curb cuts that were previously approved with the previous development, so we've not changed the location or anything. We've, of course, resubmitted to them showing our internal layout, but, and that actually affected some of our layouts in terms of distance from the curb cut and that. But the actual curb cuts on Orchard and the two on Jericho are exactly the same as, as previously approved.
Okay.
So have you submitted to them for the crosswalk that's shown here across Jericho?
We have submitted those drawings as part of the overall development that was submitted, and they are looking at that in terms of our plans, but that's something that they've requested.
The crosswalk?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and is staff okay with not having sidewalk immediately adjacent to this site? I just see that we're filling in gaps all over the, all over town of areas that, you know, we felt like sidewalk wasn't really required at one point, and then now we're filling it in years later. I know that this wouldn't get you really anywhere now.
Well, in, in our master plan of activity, should this be sidewalk or should this be like a, a path?
Well, the path is on the north side, on the other side of Jericho.
Yeah, but it's not us. That's not, and if you go from that path and you come across, should you be on concrete sidewalk?
We're, I'm, that's, are we going to have concrete sidewalk all the way down Orchard Road, or are we going to have path? Well, it's path now. It exists. So this path that's shown is an existing path, I believe, on Orchard.
Oh, is it the, okay, all right, never mind.
But just nothing on, on their side of Jericho, that's why, that's the question.
It's something we can identify for future, but I don't necessarily see it as necessary for this particular development at this time.
Okay. I would like to make sure that if they do that crossing across Jericho, that folks can get on a sidewalk to the gas station without necessarily walking through the parking lot. If we just did that, you know, put in a bunch of sidewalk over by Starbucks on Orchard for that same reason, just something to look at.
At that point, then, they may need to look at providing that sidewalk along, along Jericho and have it connect down that way.
And if there's a logical reason why it just stops at the property line, that's fine, I don't, I'm not going to be a stick in the mud on it, so. Any?
Questioning, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. We've heard the statements from the residents on the other side of Jericho. Was there any comments or participation that you're aware of from the property immediately west along that property line?
Received no comments from that property.
Anything else? Perfect. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Just a couple items in terms of, not a full presentation, but just in comparison to what was approved before and what is now. We are less dense than what was approved. In your ordinance that you allow a seventy-five percent impervious coverage, we're only sixty percent, so we're leaving fifteen percent on the table. Also, we know that we need to give up things when we're asking for a deviation in this case, and such is the signage. Signage actually allowed for this site is eight hundred square feet. We're only asking for five hundred and thirty square feet, so we're leaving two hundred and seventy square feet on the table. And the reason we're asking for the variances, obviously, is not for more signage, it's just to increase the number of signs, because we literally have four businesses on the property, the Dunkin' Donuts, the C Store, the fueling component, and the car wash. And obviously, you, you can't sign that properly by putting it on one sign in one spot. So we've broken up much smaller signs for the appropriate spots and the placements, and again, we're leaving two hundred and seventy square feet on the site. And then the last point I'd like to make is that we're a much more conservative, conservative design than the previously approved design. We're a full masonry-bearing building. The car wash is not only masonry walls, but precast concrete deck as well. The, the C Store, all four sides are masonry-bearing, so high-quality materials. And then we have tower accents that are architectural-style shingles, so relating a little bit more to the residential flavor in the area. And so I think it's, it's a less dense proposal than what was previously approved, and the variances that we're asking for, like the reduction of the foundation landscaping is from five feet to four feet, to allow us to have the safe dimensions for the front aisle from the building to the canopy, the canopy to the front curb. So everything is forced by Kane County is what our distances are, and so we have to act in, in those parameters. And so that's why we're asking for that one foot reduction, but the point is well-taken. The landscaping that was in that full five feet, what can't fit in the four feet is being relocated to the site in different areas. And that is true throughout with the, the canopy coverage thing is a function of our business. We have auto canopies inside an area, so like a larger store has a parking area, and then you have, excuse me, the, the landscaping, you know, at each end of each row. We don't have rows and rows of parking, we have a canopy, and obviously, we can't put trees under the canopy. So if you took the canopies away, our auto canopies, and looked at the pavement area for our parking, we do meet the forty percent ratio. But when you put the canopies back in, which is a nature of the business, that's where we're only thirty percent. So, so it's kind of a function of the business there. And that's really, all, all the deviations, we feel, are really meeting the intent of the code, and, and we're trying to, like I said, with the signage, sign it better, smaller signs but better signage, landscaping, put it in the appropriate spot. And we look forward to coming to the Village of Montgomery, and, and we hope you do the same for us.
Thank you. And did you state your, your name?
I'm Christian Kulischewski from WT Group, and we are the architects and engineers for Gas and Wash.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more item came up, if I may. You're talking about the signage space in smaller signs. I see in the documentation the one larger sign, but it sounds like, are you talking about having multiple smaller signs?
Well, that one, actually, that one, the previously approved one was fourteen feet tall, and we're only eleven feet tall, so we're, we're less than that sign. What's mentioned in the staff report is the one sign at the, at our canopy, the longer canopy in the middle. We bump up the canopy just to break up that long plane, and to fit the proportion of that, a forty-square-foot sign would look a little small. So the sign itself is forty-five point two square feet, it fits that space better. But again, if you look at the whole face of the canopy, we are less than the allowed square footage for the face of that canopy. It's just the one sign is just a little bit bigger.
But that's on the canopy itself.
That's on the canopy.
So the only sign that's going to be on the roadway will be one sign like this.
There'll be two of them, one for the C Store and one for the car wash, which is allowed, but we are eleven feet versus the previously approved fourteen feet. So we're actually less square footage than what was previously approved.
So there's one sign that's located near that full access on Jericho, that's the one monument sign, and then the other one is on Orchard, near the right-in, right-out off of Orchard Road. So both of those monument signs will be the eleven-foot-tall monument signs. The previous ones approved were fourteen.
Orchard Road will be a similar design to this as well?
Yes.
What's the existing allowable height?
Our code currently limits single tenant users to a maximum eight-foot-tall sign.
Any other questions? Tom? All right. I would ask that you consider, if it makes sense, some way to punch sidewalk from the north. I think you're going to get a lot of foot traffic coming from the other side of the road. Just consider that.
Certainly.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. With that, I would entertain a motion on the Plan Commission recommendation this evening.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? Call and roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Night Carrie six zero. Item B this evening is Ordinance 1921 granting an amendment to the special use planned, planned unit development for this project. This is first reading. Is there any objection from the board of putting this on consent at future meeting? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, item C this evening, Ordinance 1922, amending the Village Code, Section three dash nine, to create a Class A liquor license for Debbie's video gaming at 1240 Ogden Avenue, waiver first passage on the second. Anybody want to talk about it? I can.
Obviously, they've come to you before, twice. They moved to the location that you'd recommended before, they have requested a Class A license. So I guess I would be happy to answer any questions.
And the only Class A is Four Boys? Class A is Pouring?
I don't have what Class A is.
The Tavern.
Is it Tavern license?
So that's, is that the way that they conveyed that to us, that they wanted the Tavern? They wanted liquor? They wanted, I mean, the full, it's a full bar license?
Yeah, and they conveyed that they wanted mixed drinks.
They said mixed drink, yeah.
Because they don't serve food.
Right.
They were clear about that as well. That's why they couldn't do the restaurant license, so A is the other one available.
That's why we, we had to create a new license for those percentages, for, because of the restaurant, you've got to be fifty percent food.
Right, but we always had an A, which is the old-school bar license, so.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
No. Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Night Carrie five one. Thank you. All right, last item for separate action is a waiver of bid and approval of a water and meter replacement program, meter and supplies purchased of three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Bollie. So the Village of Montgomery recently advertised a request for proposal for the installation of new water meters and transponders for residential water customers within the Village's water distribution system. This project will span a total of four years, with this year's portion being twelve hundred meters and transponders performed contractually, and five hundred meters and transponders performed with Public Works staff. As a result of COVID-19 pandemic, there's been an issue with multiple manufacturing companies acquiring microchips that are required for various items in a variety of different industries. The water meters and transponders that the Village currently uses and are specified in the RFP to be supplied by the Village to the contractor are one of the items that are affected by the shortage. Therefore, to stay on pace with the meter replacement schedule that has been established, staff is recommending the purchase of a hundred and, or I'm sorry, fifteen hundred water meters and fifteen hundred transponders from Core and Main Company in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollars. This purchase will supply the number of meters and transponders to cover the total project for this fiscal year, along with the current number of meters and transponders that Public Works currently has in the inventory. The total budget for water meters in the current fiscal year is seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which also includes funds for other items related to infrastructure that coincide with the Village's plan for transferring to a fixed base reading system for the water meter system. You may recall, the Village Board approved a purchase of water meters at the April 19th meeting. Those meters will allow for the project of replacement meters to begin, while the additional meters and transponders are on order. I also want to remind the board that these items are... for this fiscal year, along with the current number of meters and transponders that Public Works currently has in the inventory. The total budget for water meters in the current fiscal year is $736,000, which also includes funds for other items related to infrastructure that coincide with the village's plan for transferring to a fixed-base reading system for the water meter system. You may recall, the Village Board approved a purchase of water meters at the April 19th meeting. Those meters will allow for the project of replacement meters to begin while the additional meters and transponders are on order. I also want to remind the board that these items are, fall under a sole-source purchase, which was also discussed at the April 19th meeting. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this item.
Just a quick question. If our budgeted amount is $736,000, we're spending $370,000, a little over. The remaining dollars are going to be spent this year on the various other construction-related costs, and that just doesn't go back in the general fund, does it?
No. So, there's other items besides, so there's a future plan for the village to install collectors that will go up for the fixed-base reading system, as I mentioned. There's also an allotment within the budget for new construction water meters, which aren't included in the replacement program, which would be new development housing that's going up, and so on and so forth.
Got it. Easy question.
Well, but, so that those dollars there could sit unused for more than just this fiscal year then, correct?
More than likely, all of those funds will be expended before the fiscal year is over.
Okay, all right.
New development.
New development, meter replacement, and the purchase of and installation of the collectors.
Okay. Softball question. The meters and the, you know, the readers here at 127, 120, is that similar in price to what we've previously paid?
Correct. There's not been an increase currently to the cost of the transponders and meters, so we're currently on schedule. The big issue here is really just timing. In order to provide the contractor, once we, once we get to a point where we come back with a recommendation to the board for selecting a contractor to do the installation work, this is in order for us to have enough inventory and stock to keep the project rolling along throughout the course of the year. So, that's really the big issue that we're seeing right now. Roughly about a 12-week lead time, but we have been told that it is getting better, not worse. So, that's words of encouragement, too, from the manufacturer.
Sounds perfect.
No concern of storage?
There's always a concern of storage with us, but we make do. You know, given the time of the year, that's one of the benefits for us, that we can afford to park some equipment outside in order to store some of the equipment internally, so...
Thanks, Mark. Motion to approve?
Second.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
All right. And that carries 6-0. Not that it was close, but we do need a supermajority on the waiver of bid, which we got. All right. Items for discussion this evening is a brief update on the alternate water source. And Pete did not disappoint, 20-slide presentation on a brief update. The only thing I'm disappointed about is I don't see Freeman currently.
You don't get the full Freeman for a brief update.
Not yet.
20 slides, yes. I mean, that is brief.
20.
You don't get the full Freeman.
But, he averages two minutes a slide, so there you go.
Okay. Thank you, President Brawley. I'd like to give a brief update on the study that is in progress for the alternate water source study. Some of these slides you've seen before, but just kind of give a little bit of overview, and then we'll get into some new material.
Because they're looking at the same thing you are, so... Where the fuck is it? I can see it on my screen, but this thing is in the way. Oops. There it is. There you go. Now, they're looking at exactly what you're looking at.
Okay. All right, thanks for the technical assist. Appreciate that. Okay, so, I just want to review the water source sustainability again, what supply options that we're looking at, get into some decision considerations that you all have to think about. And then, I've got some specifics on schedule that we're going to want to take a second to talk about. And then, of course, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those, and you can interrupt at any time. We've talked about this in the past, where the deep sandstone aquifer is being mined. That's been going on, you know, for some time. But, we're getting to a point where we're starting to get to a critical phase of the sandstone dewatering. And in the next 10 to 15 years, we'll get to a point where even with Joliet switching sources, we'll have areas of where the risk of well inoperability is quite high, and it fits into our particular region of southern Kane County and Kendall County. So, that's the reason why there's an urgency to work on the planning. Again, we won't be likely switching water supplies until 2030 or 2035, depending on the alternative that is selected. But, we can't stay on the deep sandstone indefinitely. That's the one certainty that we have. The options that we're looking at are really two primary areas. One is Lake Michigan supply, and we're looking at three different alternatives for Lake Michigan supply. The Joliet Water Commission, the DuPage Water Commission, which is already formed. The Joliet Water Commission is in the process of being formed. And then, a third alternative from Lake Michigan is the Illinois Lake Water Company out of Plainfield, which is also being looked at. Then, in addition to that, we're looking at the Fox River as a potential source, and there's three alternatives that are being considered there. One would be the village going by themselves and treating Fox River water. The other is the subregional approach where Oswego, Yorkville, Montgomery would work together and do a joint water treatment plant on the Fox River. And the third would be to work with City of Aurora and acquire water from them. So, those are the six alternatives that we're evaluating for the study. There's a number of considerations to select a new alternate water supply source, and cost may or may not be the most important factor. Each person may have a different perspective on what is the most important item for them. We will be putting together a decision matrix to help you manage those considerations so that you can kind of decide. And if you want to apply a higher relevance to one or more of the factors, you're certainly willing to do that. But, certainly, cost is a consideration, risk, water quality, management, staffing, governance and control, and then, of course, sustainability. Just to get into those a little more detailed, on the supply and treatment costs, you have buy-in costs. Most of the commissions have some sort of a buy-in. Of course, you have a capital component where you may have to construct a pipeline to get water from, for example, DuPage Water Commission to the area, or from the Joliet Water Commission. And then, you have the cost of purchased water. If we buy through DuPage Water, or the Joliet Commission, or Illinois Lake Water, they're all buying their water from the City of Chicago Department of Water Management. And so, there's a purchased water cost that has to be considered, as well as the capital cost. And then, there's also operation maintenance and replacement costs that needs to be included with, for example, the pipeline or other things in the system. Then, you also have to look at internal storage distribution and controls that'll be, have to be installed. If you do get a Lake Michigan allocation, you have to provide two times your average day of storage based on your allocation. So, that would be a 2030 allocation. There'd be other requirements as well, but those have a capital contribution. Those are things that we'll be summarizing and presenting back to you. The ONMR is, again, another consideration that has to be included because there is a cost involved in operating and maintaining the systems. So, a couple of things to think about. It's sometimes not just the residential bill that you'll have in 2030, but it's also considering the long-term costs as well, the 50-year costs. And some of the alternatives may be better in the long run, but have some higher costs initially. So, those are, again, things that'll just have to be compared. Doesn't make it right or wrong, but it's just things that you all will need to recognize. And we will point out, obviously, those differences, so you can consider that. Other things to consider in the continuum are just the risk of the design permitting, other issues that... And that's under a component we call risk. So, in other words, if you're constructing a pipeline from the beginning, there's some risk in the fact that you have to build it. So, there may be construction overruns, things like that. So, that's something that'll have to be considered under the risk management item, or the risk item. And then, certain facilities might have the ability to expand, some may not. And again, we'll point those things out so that you have that awareness. Okay. I have an...
You might just have to click on the screen somewhere, and then it'll move.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, then another consideration is the water quality. So, you know, if it's a river intake, it'll be, you know, the river intake versus the lake, you know, Lake Michigan. There's seasonal water quality in the river. Obviously, you have algae blooms, you have other things, you know, to consider, but you also have some impact on the Great Lakes as well that'll have to be considered. And, you know, of course, there's who's going to be responsible for the regulatory compliance. If you buy water from City of Chicago, the City Department of Water Management is in control of all of those regulatory components. If we treat river water ourselves, then obviously, that would be something that we'd be responsible for. So, again, just to kind of keep in mind that these things will be coming back. And I will say this, you know, no matter what system or source the village would select, it will meet all state, federal guidelines for safe water. So, it's not like one is going to be superior in terms of its regulatory compliance with everything that's required. Management staffing is another consideration. Again, just use the example, if you buy water from Lake Michigan, you know, they provide the staffing. You're just purchasing water from them. They're delivering the water to you. If you had a joint water treatment plant with Yorkville, Oswego, you would have to have, you know, put staff in place to run that joint water treatment facility and manage it. So, again, that's important or not, you know, it just depends on your perspective, I think. The other thing that sometimes folks are concerned about is how much control do they have over the water system? So, setting rates, you know, controlling who gets additional water supply in the future, if you add members to a commissioner, or you don't. How you're, if, are you part of the commissioner, are you a customer? There's a number of things to consider there, and we'll point out those with the various options that are available to the village. There's a sustainability concern that we'll have to take into account, and that would be whether or not there's going to be any seasonal flow restrictions. Surface waters, surface river waters do have a limitation on 10-year, seven-day low-flow requirement. You can't go below that on any stream. When we did, you may recall, when we did the study in 2015, we did go through an analysis of state water survey of the number of days it potentially could be affected. We'll bring that back up so you can see it again. During those times of low-flow restriction, then we would use the backup, existing backup wells to meet that demand. And that was looked at in the study, and state water survey did do sustainability analysis on that. So, again, that'll be another detail that we'll look at in the future. Terms of schedule, there's a number of things that are underway, and there's a number of staff meetings that will be taking place as we get more details and information on all of the things that will be considered. But, the things I wanted to draw your attention to are the ones that are highlighted in turquoise. I tried to use blue, but that wasn't available to me, so highlighted that in turquoise. And we, our current schedule is to have a presentation to the Village Board on the 13th of September. And then, I think you're aware, but the three communities are calling the Coalition for the water supply, Water Link. So, Water Link would then have a joint public meeting on the 20th to go over essentially the same information. We'll report to you on the 13th. And then, we're planning on having a Village of Montgomery-centric meeting in October to kind of go over the same meeting, would give people another chance to come out and talk about what's being proposed. Then, we'd like to propose a half-day workshop, whether that's a Saturday morning or an evening, where we can get into this in a lot more detail than we would even do at the board presentations, which will be, you know, substantial. But, we want to give enough time for you all to be able to get into the details and ask any questions you might have, so we're comfortable with where we're going. Right now, that 11-6 date is a Saturday, so could be a Saturday morning. That's something I'll work with Jeff to see what the best time is, but we would like to do that in early November. And then, we're asking then for, you know, some board direction or selection of the water source alternative late November, early December. We have those two meetings penciled in as the decision. It could be done as early as 11:22 or as late as 12:13. And part of the reason for this is the formation of the Joliet Water Commission, that opportunity, they're going, they're going to need a final commitment in January if we want to go that direction. So, that's kind of one of the drivers of the schedule. So, that's probably, you know, the last time we presented schedule, it was a little more, less granular than that, but that's what's going to be happening in the next few months and the meetings. And, you know, we'll be happy to provide any additional information or individual meetings that are needed as we get into this, if we need more, if you need more information or have other questions. But, again, I'll work with Jeff to try to set these, but that's kind of tentative what we would like to propose going forward. Something else I wanted to point out to you, because it's being discussed in various communities, is if the village opts for a Lake Michigan allocation, we will have to adopt some water conservation requirements. That's a requirement from Illinois DNR in order for us to get our allocation, which we'll have to submit to DNR for. I'd like to not get into that in detail tonight, but just let you know that these are things that we'll have to address. Some of it is already being addressed in the village, so it's not new. But, we'll have to formally make sure that we meet all those requirements if we're going to go through with the Lake Michigan allocation. We may still want to adopt these, even if we go into the Fox River for our supply, but it's a requirement for Lake Michigan. So, we don't have to get into this in detail tonight, but I think as we get to a point where we know which direction we're going to go, we'll come back and talk about it in more detail, and we can plan for it. But, it's something that we just need to anticipate. And, again, the village has generally been going into these directions. You know, the village is one of the first communities to adopt the NWPA model ordinance... That's a requirement from Illinois DNR in order for us to get our allocation, which we'll have to submit to DNR for. I'd like to not get into that in detail tonight, but just let you know that these are things that we'll have to address. Some of it is already being addressed in the village, so it's not new, but we'll have to formally make sure that we meet all those requirements if we're gonna go through with Lake Michigan allocation. We may still want to adopt these, even if we go into the Fox River for our supply, but it's a requirement for Lake Michigan. So, we don't have to get into this in detail tonight, but I think as we get to a point where we know which direction we're gonna go, we'll come back and talk about it in more detail, and we can plan for it, but it's something that we just need to anticipate. And, again, the village has generally been going into these directions, you know, the village is one of the first communities to adopt the NWPA model ordinance for outdoor watering, so the village has been a leader on that, and I don't expect that much of this will be a surprise or be that impactful, so. So that's all I wanted to present tonight, again, just wanted to give you a brief update, report out the schedule, and happy to answer any questions if you, if you have any at this time.
Thanks, Pete. Just briefly, as you guys and gals have probably noticed, Oswego and Yorkville are currently kind of going through the same or similar type public meetings, so I felt that it would be appropriate for us to kind of get a quick refresher, just to understand that we've been looking at this for six years. You know, six years ago, you know, we identified that the wells are going dry, we have to make a decision. This is going to be probably the single most important decision that you will make as a board member representing your community, and due to the Joliet decision, we're aiming to have a decision by the end of this year. So, while we're not talking about this at every board meeting, I can assure you that our staff, our consultants, Oswego, Joliet, all kinds of folks are meeting on a monthly basis. I'm in the Joliet meetings, I think Mark and Jeff are in meetings with Joliet other days, so while we have not made a decision on any of that, we're kind of keeping our foot in every location right now until we get all of our data, and then we can make our decision. And what Pete went through tonight is part of a huge decision matrix that I think all of us will end up taking a look at, as to what our priority is in making a decision. So this was the brief presentation, to say the least.
Right.
But thank you.
And to add to your point, Mayor, yeah, staff has been very involved, staff and consultants have been very involved in both meetings with Montgomery, Oswego, and Yorkville, and the Joliet Water Commission and other things. Jeff's been involved, of course, Mark and Justin has also been involved. The Joliet Water Commission had asked for finance directors also to be included, because there's a lot of different financing components to constructing a pipeline in the case of the Water Commission and Joliet. So, there's a lot of moving parts. There was a meeting last Thursday to discuss updated costs for the Joliet Water Commission project, and that'll, there'll be a workshop July 22nd. I think there's a mayor's and manager's meeting that Matt and Jeff generally attend July 15th, and those have been monthly meetings, so we're, as the mayor points out, we're trying to keep abreast of all the different alternatives that are available to us, so that, you know, we can make the best decision for the village, so, yep, so.
I know we're not gonna get into the weeds on this necessarily tonight, but when you talk about the, the capital investment in that line from Montgomery to be part of that Joliet Water Commission, is that already an approved, informed line from Joliet to Montgomery, as far as the possibility of permits, access, and, and land to, to bury that line?
Yeah, so the way it's, the, what's happening is the, the Water Commission, the intent of the Water Commission is that they will construct, it's kind of what they refer to as the all-for-one approach. So anybody that's in the Water Commission, the commission will, will permit, construct, design, and build the pipelines from City of Chicago to the region, and then distribute it to all the communities in, that are part of the commission. Right now, there's 12 communities that are considering being part of the commission. Not all 12 will likely become commission members, but anybody that becomes a commission member, the main will be installed to a connection point that's been designated. So, turns out that Montgomery has two connection points, Oswego has two or three, I can't remember, and then I think Yorkville has two. So, they would bring that water to the region, and the commission would be responsible for permitting. The commission has got a study underway where they're doing route assessments and kind of planning for those corridors. They don't have the specific streets that will be going down with pipeline at this time, but they will be responsible to make that determination. Right now, the cost estimates that are prepared for the Water Commission have a contingency of about 25% to address any of the things that may or may not be exactly sorted out in terms of the route, so it gives them some flexibility to maneuver the route as needed. The commission will have the ability to condemn property and get land as needed, and to use existing public rights away for installation of the pipeline.
And that will require special legislation from Illinois, right, that they're working on?
Yes, and that legislation has been introduced, and that's not unusual, other, the DuPage Water Commission had similar, obviously different, but similar legislation was needed to create the DuPage Water Commission. So, it'll be somewhat based on that, but specific to the requirements for this Water So, because if you, some of you may or may not know, but the DuPage Water Commission had a county component, there was a sales tax in DuPage County that funded a lot of the capital that was to build pipelines for the DuPage Water Commission. This Water Commission, the Joliet Water Commission, will not have that county component, so it'll be, you know, different than the DuPage Commission, but similar, if you will.
Sounds really simple and inexpensive. Looking forward to the workshop.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of costs, a lot of moving parts, but, you know, it's, it's necessary, you know, for the good of the region, and, you know, so look forward to having the discussion with everybody.
When we go through that discussion, can you get us t-shirts to say I survived the half-day water discussion?
We probably can arrange that.
I've been Freeman.
Thanks, Pete. Alright, last item, newer unfinished, anybody have anything? I'm not gonna wait long. Alright, sounds great. Beautification committee is canceled for tomorrow, or for, for Wednesday, and then we are canceling the committee, the whole meeting, for next week, so we'll meet in two weeks on July 26th. Since we are canceling those meetings, can I get a motion? Oh, and do we need intergovernmental July 26th?
No.
Do you want to keep it on there in case we need it, or cancel it?
Negative.
Cancel.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll be canceling those meetings, can I get a, a motion to approve that?
Somebody? Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yeah.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Alright, we do not have executive session, and a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.